All right, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Okay, so, good afternoon, everyone. And Happy New Year. I'm Anna Johnson, County Council Member for District Eight. Welcome to our roundtable discussion today. So I always like to start off with our place of allegiance. So, y'all, let's do that now. See my little flag over here? Bill? Okay. Our place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. And justice for all. Okay. From Don Jing? All right. So it looks like we have a full house today. That's great. Um, today's topic, we are gonna talk about elder abuse. And I thought that this would be a good topic. We had this a few years ago. And I'm seeing a much more increase in this kind of abuse. And so, thought, well, we're gonna start the year off right. Talk about it. And please don't hesitate to join in whenever there's a question or a comment that you wanna make. And before I forget, our next topic is going to be on broadband. So I know some of you are anxious to hear about the broadband. And that is gonna be forthcoming. Okay? So, we have Ms. Morland from MU, Dr. Morland from MUSC on. She is going to be our lead speaker, Ms.
Yep, I'm right here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm looking all over to see you. All right, well, it's a nice to see you. And I'm looking forward to the information that you wanna share with us today.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna pull up some PowerPoints real quick. Am I allowed to, can you make it so I can share my screen?
Yes, ma'am, I got you. And then we also have Russell Rich that's gonna speak either, I guess, y'all two discussed who was speaking first.
We did. So I'm gonna talk a little bit to start out, just about the prevalence of elder abuse, and give a little bit of statistics and kind of the stats background. And then Russell's, and then Russell's gonna take over. And his part will be probably a little more interesting and relevant because it's gonna be more about kind of how to report the abuse, what's reportable, and kind of what you do when you suspect the abuse. Okay, so let me pull up. And I don't wanna do death by PowerPoint, but I also thought that it would, when we're talking about prevalence and stats, sometimes it's easier to just see on the screen what's happening. So let me just share my screen here. So first, I just wanna talk, can everyone see the whole screen there?
Oh, yes.
Perfect. So I'm just gonna give a little background. And state by state, elder abuse, the definition of elder abuse does change. So I'm talking about a little bit more in South Carolina. And I think Russell will, once he gets into this, he'll have some more information about how this specifically relates in South Carolina and how it relates within our county even more specifically. But kind of overall, when we think about, or when we talk about abuse in older adults, the main piece that we're talking about is this exploitation and mistreatment of seniors. Now, that's where, you know, seniors, we think of over sixty-five. But that's where some question does tend to come up about kind of what, what exactly institutes that? Or what, what's the exact definition around that? Abuse can occur in a nursing home, a medical facility, or in the home of an elderly person. So just knowing that it can happen pretty much anywhere. And it can include a wide range of types of abuse. And we'll talk a little bit about these separately in a little bit. But it can include physical abuse, sexual abuse, financial and material exploitation. So this can mean money, so like actual money. But it also can mean materials or household items or homes, you know, actual owned property, neglect, and then also abandonment, which those are very similar but distinct in and of themselves. So it actually is, I like to show this prevalence, not to make people depressed, but just to raise the awareness that the prevalence of abuse in older adults is fairly high. So approximately one out of ten of community residing adults over sixty have suffered, suffered some type of abuse in the United States in the past year. So that's about ten percent. The prevalence is actually a little higher in South Carolina. So it's fifteen percent in South Carolina. However, it's really important to point out that only one out of twenty-four cases gets reported. So these numbers are likely, when we talk about this ten percent or this fifteen percent in South Carolina, there, it's likely a lot higher than what we're seeing because a lot of times it goes unreported. And no one ever really knows about the abuse, especially with, with an older person because they may pass away or they may leave us and it's never, it's never reported. Contrary to popular belief, the most common perpetrator is actually somebody the victim knows or someone that they live with. So this is very similar to just any type of abuse that we talk about. So when we talk about child abuse or sexual assault or any type of abuse, a lot of times people tend to think of what we see on the movies, where the stranger comes in and conducts this abuse and hurts the person. And it tends to be a very scary thing because you don't know the person. It, that's actually very rare that that's happening. It's typically somebody in all types of abuse that the victim knows very well and that they live with. And then a low social support increases the chance for mistreatment. And a big reason for that is if the older adult isn't talking to anyone else and they're really isolated and only talking to that one caregiver, then the likelihood of, you know, being helped or of that additional social support goes away. There's a lot of different signs and symptoms of physical or sexual abuse. A lot of them is where you can see. So when we think about physical abuse, we talk about bruising in unusual locations, pattern injuries like a hand slap, bite marks, marks or scars, unexplained fractures, so difficulties, injuries that are kind of in different stages of healing, which would show that, you know, it's happening kind of consistently over time. It doesn't, and a big thing to remember with all of these is when we're talking about older adults, they do a lot of times bruise more easily. Or they may have more injuries because there could be injuries related to their actual medical condition. So for instance, older adults are more likely to fall than younger adults. They are more likely to have kind of all of these, you know, different injuries. However, this big piece is that, that the explanation doesn't make sense. So it isn't consistent with the normal fall or a fall that you know about. Or it isn't consistent with what you would expect based on the medications that the person's taking or based on other factors that you know of. Dehydration and malnutrition, so the person's not getting enough to eat or they just seem very dehydrated, unexplained weight loss. So again, weight loss can go a lot, right alongside with a lot of the medical concerns that older people experience or with the medications that they're taking. But, but it would be more unexplained. Soft tissue injuries, frequent UTIs can be a really big indicator of sexual assault. Now, that doesn't mean if someone has, you know, frequent UTIs, every person has been sexually assaulted. But these are just kind of some signs that you might kind of put a red flag up in your, in your head and kind of start to look around for what else is happening. And then genital or bruising around the genitals or thigh area would be more common for sexual assaults. So who is it that's conducting the abuse? So I said already that it's most likely, oh, sorry, before I get to that, we'll talk about the effects of abuse. So there's a lot of effects of abuse, older people that are, all people that are abused have a lot of negative consequences. When we talk about older adults, thirty to fifty percent develop depression and also develop PTSD. They're more likely to have anxiety, their risk for alcohol abuse is increased, and drug use and cigarette use. So pretty much across the board, we're seeing some negative consequences alongside this abuse. So who's conducting the abuse? First, I'm gonna kind of show you these little graphs of physical maltreatment. So this would be the, that hitting, slapping, physically harming people. Just to kind of orient you, up in the top left, you'll see men. And then in the bottom right, you see women. So with both, it's overwhelmingly their partner. So it's the partner that's living with them. So either a married spouse or just a, you know, unmarried partner that's living together is the person that's most likely conducting the abuse. And that's typically because that's most likely the person that's gonna be taking care of, the older adult, is their spouse or their partner. In men, acquaintances, you see also, that's that tan, that brownish tan, little piece of the pie over on the right. And then it does, it is more highly acquaintances than, than in women. There's a lot of different, different hypotheses for that. One of those is that men may have less partners because they, the men, just based on who is there and who's available, but it doesn't necessarily mean that. It's just men may have more acquaintances taking care of them. Stranger, it's eight percent in men, but you put one percent in women. And then family member for both is around twenty percent. And that's because family members may typically be taking care of them. When we talk about sexual abuse, it's a very similar picture. Although in men, it's much more likely the partner. And in women, the acquaintance is much more likely. And this is, when you think of just the definition of sexual abuse, a lot of times people can get confused with partner. And partners can absolutely conduct sexual abuse. So this is if the person is, does not consent to it and does not say yes or is physically injured or in a medical state that they do not want to have sexual intercourse, but it's forced upon them or they have, it's had with them. So what are some risk factors? So when you think of perpetrators of who's conducting this, basically, when you think across the board, people who aren't doing well psychologically or emotionally in a lot of different areas also aren't doing well financially, are more isolated. Basically, if a perpetrator feels more isolated and is engaging in more risky behaviors, they're more likely to perpetrate just because their own mental health and their own social support is likely to be much lower. So people with a history of substance use, people with a history of mental illness, financially dependent people, people who are more isolated. And then if, especially if there's been child abuse or domestic violence already between the two partners, then it's likely to continue and even to worsen once the person becomes older. So when we look at this and think about perpetrators, our initial kind of, at least for me and probably a lot of people, our initial thought is why would people do this? You know, it's an older adult, they're caring for them. And, but I think we really need to think about the fact that it's not always intentional and that this caregiver is often undergoing a lot of stress themselves. So it doesn't make it okay. It just definitely helps to point in the direction of what can we do to prevent this? And how can we assist with this? A lot of caregivers are very overburdened, are very burnt out. The, the person may have aggression to the person they're being cared for, especially if there's Alzheimer's or there's other medical or psychological conditions that tend to cause the person to be more angry or to not remember becoming angry. The quality of relationship before the person became sick, a lot of relationships may not have been good, solid relationships ahead of time. So then when you add in an illness or someone needing to take care of someone else, that can just add on to that. And then lack of soaping, coping skills and living with the person they're taking care of. So a lot of times perpetrators, if they're living with the older person, they're basically caregiving for that person all of the time. So that can add some additional stress and can also lead to more isolation and less social support outside of that caregiver or outside of that person. Also, there's a lot of, you know, physical and mental health challenges for caregivers. Caregivers have a really difficult time. They're usually friends and family of working age. And this is the most recent stat that I could find on the amount. This is one that was shared by a couple colleagues of mine. But they, in two thousand thirteen, which I guarantee this has gone up significantly, they sacrificed sixty-seven billion dollars in lost wages specifically as the result of unpaid caregiving for their loved ones. So when it's a family or a friend, it's most likely not paid. So that is causing financial strain, which as we know from other areas, can very much lead to some negative consequences. Unemployment rates are increasing. And then I, we have to mention the COVID nineteen stressors as well. So there's a lot of related stressors that have happened over the past two years. Even more social isolation and lack of social support, financial hardship, difficulty accessing care, and then also just increased time caring for children. So the caregivers often have families of their own. So they may be caring for their families or caring for other ill family members during COVID nineteen. And stress, just in general, can lead to a lot of negative coping responses. So when you talk about increased substance use, self-harm, risky sexual behavior, any types of risky behaviors, those all tend to be a lot higher the more stress goes up. So if people are engaging in more of these negative coping responses, that can lead to more likelihood or more instances of abuse. But it also, they have, people who are caretakers often have a limited ability to engage in these positive coping mechanisms. They're trying to work, have their own life, have their own family, also take care of this loved one. So it does limit the amount of time for exercise, reading, kind of some of those other positive coping mechanisms that would help with that. I'm sure Russell's gonna talk, may, may, may not give a little bit about this, but here are just some resources for older adults and caregivers. I wanna thank Tatiana and Teresa, a couple of my colleagues, who gave me a lot of these slides and a lot of this information. I'm familiar with most, most of these. But there, there are, there are websites for all of these and you can go in and look. But I wanted to put these in here so that I can share my slides and you have them. And then I'm gonna transition over to Russell. Here's some numbers, and I put these on here just so that you have the numbers in a PowerPoint form. But Russell's gonna talk about these a little bit more specifically and talk about South Carolina Adult Protective Services and kind of like, what do you do if you suspect these types of abuse and what should happen? So I'm obviously gonna be on the whole time. I'm open to questions. It might make more sense. I'm definitely open now for questions, but it might make more sense for Russell to kind of chat for a minute and then we can do more of kind of the open roundtable. I know you guys typically have more of an open discussion about these. But thank you for listening.
Okay, all right, well, excellent. I'll, I'll go to Russell Rich now. And then, once we hear his presentation, we'll open up all the questions.
Okay, good morning. Thanks, Angie. Thanks, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate it. First of all, I wanna say thank y'all for inviting us. This is something I've been doing. Well, we started doing these things before COVID hit and COVID put a dent in it. And we weren't able to do them for a long time. But now we're starting to get more and more back into the getting out and talking to folks about APS, what we do, how do we do it? Because I'm telling you, I would get questions all the time. People had no idea what Adult Protective Services, or as in DSS, we're Adult Advocacy. And under Adult Advocacy, you have two different, you have Adult Protective Services, but you also have Domestic Violence Program. So I kinda deal with both. So what I'm gonna talk about more is on the Adult Protective side. I do have a little presentation or something I can kind of show because I want everybody to kind of understand there again, I want you to leave this kind of understanding what we do, how we do, what our mandates are. Because that's one of those things people are always asking, you know? They'll call reports in, they don't get accepted. And they're like, well, why wasn't that accepted? Why wasn't this accepted? Why didn't y'all do this? Why didn't y'all do that? So we're limited with what we can do under the current laws that we have. So let me see if, can I pull, pull this up? The little PowerPoint?
Yes, you should be able to share.
Okay, let me see if I can get it to pull up. There it is, right there. Okay, let me see here. I'm used to doing teams, so it's a whole lot different. Okay, come on, are you gonna do it? Ah, there we go. Okay. So there again, Russell, I'm Russell Rich. I'm Director of County Operations for Adult Advocacy. So, you know, when people talk about us and what we do, we operate under Omnibus Adult Protection Act. This is the act that pretty much is our guide as to what we're, who we work with, what we do. And as you can see, we're, we're what's called an investigative entity. So part of our job is to investigate allegations of abuse neglect. And when you hear me say neglect, we put neglect into one, one, just, just one bowl, I guess you'd say. Under that, you have self-neglect, you have neglect by caregiver, you have different things. But we just kind of put it, so when you hear me say neglect, it's meaning all. Same with abuse. You, you have a lot of different types of abuse. But when I say abuse, I'm referring to all typologies. But we investigate allegations of abuse, neglect, exploitation of a vulnerable adult. As you can see, there's other ones there. The Ombudsman's Office, SLED, Medicaid fraud, those, those agencies. So we're a part of that. Within the Omnibus Adult Protection Act, you know, it gives us, and this is one of the things that's really difficult is because our definition of a vulnerable adult, depending on which agency you talk to, you're gonna get a different impression or a different answer. Now, the, the one we operate on, which is the law, and this is kind of what we go by, is a vulnerable adult who's eighteen years old or older has a, has a physical, mental condition which impairs them from being able to provide that care or protection for themselves. And there again, you see some of the things that can be included, you know, brain damage, advanced age, physical, mentally, emotional dysfunction. Competency, I'm gonna talk a little bit, a little, in just a few minutes about some competency and capacity because those are very important with us and those are things we have to look at. But for a case to be accepted with Adult Protective Services, when they call it in, it has to meet really four criteria. First of all, they have to be eighteen years of older, as we see. They have to have that condition which substantially impairs and keeps them from being able to provide any care or protection for themselves. There has to be an allegation of abuse, neglect, or exploitation. This a lot of times will, will kind of trip folks up because the person does have some impairments, but there is no abuse, neglect, or exploitation. So therefore, it doesn't meet the criteria. And then also, it has to be at the hands of a caregiver, which kind of brings us to another thing. In the state of South Carolina, I've been looking around at different states to see what that definition of a caregiver, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, there really is no clear-cut definition of a, of a caregiver. You know, we've, there are some states where if you bring somebody a cup of water, you're considered a caregiver. Others require a whole lot more than that. So we're kind of somewhere in the middle with that. If it's not at the hands of a caregiver, of course, it's then considered self-neglect and it goes back to that condition which keeps them from being able to provide. It gets a little complicated. But we have an intake tool that we use that was developed with USC, some national groups, NAPSA, which is the National Association of Adult Protective Services Association, and some elder abuse lawyers and different things. And it's, it's complicated. I'm just gonna say that. It's way beyond my comprehension. It has these algorithms. But when you call those reports in and they're asking you those questions, they're inputting that information, and then it does these algorithms and it spits out whether or not this is a case or not. So there again, our mission is to protect vulnerable adults from abuse, neglect, self-neglect, exploitation by investigating and providing, and this is real important here, providing temporary protective services. Our services are never intended to be long-term. They're always intended to be short-term, temporary, get that person safe, get them to a place to where their needs are being met. And at that point, we're pretty much, we're out of it. Now, there again, a lot of times we'll have situations where we may be involved in cases longer. But generally speaking, our cases last anywhere about six months, maybe a little bit more. Sometimes we'll have them last more than a year. But generally speaking, about six to nine months is usually the typical amount of time that we're involved in cases. And, and there again, you know, that temporary protective services. Now, it's kind of, here is kind of misleading where it says we're providing these services. The truth is, DSS or APS is a coordinating agency. We don't provide any services. We have no services in APS. Child welfare, yes. You have a lot of different services that are available for children. But in APS, we have no services. Everything we do, we coordinate outside of our agency. So if they need mental health, we go to mental health. If they need housing, we go to, to, to other, if they need conservators, we'll look at, I saw origins on there, which we're familiar with. I've worked with them before. So we'll go outside of our agency to find those services to come in and provide them for that, that vulnerable adult. So there again, APS mandate, eighteen years older, lives in the community. That's another thing. A lot of times we'll get reports about folks that are living in nursing homes. We don't investigate nursing homes. So they have to be in a community setting for us to be involved. They have to be a vulnerable adult. And there has to be an allegation of abuse, neglect, or exploitation. Now, a lot of times, you know, I try, I really wanna make this, this point that age and poverty alone are not sufficient to define, define a person as a vulnerable adult. A lot of times, we will, and I'll just, I admit it, we run into a little conflict with law enforcement because they will go to a person's home that's out in the rural parts of, of the community. And of course, a lot of those communities, they may not have indoor plumbing. I still, my family's from Turberville, South Carolina. And there's still homes down in Turberville around in that area that do not have running water. They still have outhouses and different kind of things. And they'll go to these homes, they'll see these things and they'll say, oh, no, this can't happen. This person can't live like this. But they have a right to do that. So we always look at, you know, just because they're elder, I'll give you another example. My great-grandmother, she died when she was a hundred-three years old. She lived by herself until she was a hundred and one, until she got cancer. Now, you would never tell Ms. Lizzie Turberville that she was a vulnerable adult because she was a hundred and one. In fact, every morning, she would get up and go out into her yard and chop wood for her little pot-belly stove, which she would sit by and have her cup of coffee every morning. You didn't tell her she was vulnerable and she couldn't do that. So we always look at that. And I try to make a point of that, that just because your age and poverty, we cannot say that they're a vulnerable adult. So there again, what are protective services? And there again, our objective is to protect that vulnerable adult for harm. And it can be anything from, you know, there again, securing and coordinating existing services. You may have somebody that has some services already, may need a little bit more. They may need living. They may need to go into a nursing home, a assisted living, a boarding home or something like that. So we're gonna try and help them with that. They may need Medicaid. They may need Social Security. They may need Medicare. They may need different things. We're gonna help them with that, try to get those that they're entitled to. They may, may need medical services. Now, under our current funding, we cannot pay for medical bills. But there again, that's why we're gonna work with Medicare, Medicaid, try to get those services for them. And then also, in some cases, legal services. We've been doing this more and more of the past, I guess, what, year and a half? Because we have so many clients that actually have some resources that need to be protected. So we're more and more getting involved in probate to where we're working with attorneys to get conservatorships and even guardianships in place. Guardian's a little bit more difficult because we don't really have that professional guardian program in state of South Carolina. Most of your guardians are paid guardians. So when you have folks that have little resources, they can't really pay it. So we're always looking at family or friends or other folks that'll be able to do that. There again, I'm gonna kind of brush through this real quick. You know, physical abuse is one of those typologies. Little, little thing that Angie said a little while ago about reporting. When you look at our reports and we're working on it for, to gather that data from the two thousand twenty-one, when you look at two thousand nineteen to two thousand, end of two thousand twenty, physical abuse was our least reported. It was the least reported typology we got. It was, I think, around fourteen percent was what we got. And we got, I think it was close to, and I'm thinking of it off the top of my head, there was close to eleven thousand cases that are folks that we worked with. So that's a really tiny number when you think about it. At fifteen percent of all those cases were abuse cases. And I do have something that I kind of do where we talk a little bit more about that. But there again, that just kind of shows that physical abuse is just, for whatever reason, it's not one of those typologies that is reported. A lot of folks thinks that that's, that's our biggest one. And I'll be honest with you, before I came to work with DSS, when I thought DSS, when I thought APS, that's what I thought, that abuse, calling it abuse. But there again, it's, it's one of the least reported. And it's also very difficult because a lot of times the, the victim has a relationship with that person, which we don't name perpetrators in Adult Protective Services. And they have that relationship. And a lot of times, it's very difficult for them or for us to get them to say, hey, yes, this is what's happening. Even though we might have a lot of the things that Angie was talking about, the evidence there, it's often difficult. And we also often have a difficult time with law enforcement because there again, law enforcement It's often difficult, and we also often have a difficult time with law enforcement, because there again, law enforcement has to have the evidence. And it, it just, it, it, sometimes it's very difficult, I'll just say that. There again, neglect by caregiver, self-neglect, exploitation. So those are just basically the typologies. I just want to make sure I'm out of time, because I want to give people time for questions. So we do have response times. So a lot of times, people will call or report in and, and think we're gonna come right then. And it really depends on that report. So if it's an abuse. Twenty-four hours, though, sometimes we can do it in zero to two, depending on the type of abuse that's going on. Neglect by another's forty-eight hours, exploitation seventy-two hours, or self-neglect is forty-eight hours. However, there you go, depending on the report, a supervisor can issue that zero to two. So it, it's one of those things, we'll have folks call and they'll be like, well, when are y'all gonna be here? And there again, depending on that, it may be, and we also have to remember too, that. Our, our hub is constantly getting those phone calls in. So it may be a period of time before that even gets to the county. You know, I'm gonna talk about two areas right now that we deal in, really kind of drives what we do. And that's competency and capacity. So when we're talking about clients that we're working with. Or that we're getting reports on, those are two things we are automatically looking at, is what is that person's competency and what is that person's capacity? Because what we do is, we're looking at that person. And we have to assume, unless we have something that states otherwise, we have to assume that that person has competency. And that person has capacity. So that means this person is competent to make decisions, and they have capacity to provide that care and protection for themselves. And of course, competency is a legal term. There again, we presume all adults are competent. The only way we can get that declaration of incompetency is issued by court through probate. And of course, that competent adult has a right to self-determination. We'll often get these reports, especially when you're talking about neglect, self-neglect in particular. Where we'll get a report, and that adult will be like, no, I can make decisions for myself. I don't want y'all involved. Get out of my house. Now, you know, our services are completely voluntary, unless they are court ordered. But if we show up at somebody's house and you say, I don't want you here. I don't want your services. They have a right to say they don't want it, and at that point, we have to leave. So there's. We, we really can't do unless we have something that shows that that person's incompetent and can't make that decision. We, we just, we can't be involved. So competency is very important. Capacity is also very important. We're gonna look at, can. You know, because capacity can both, both mental and physical. Their ability to makes, refers to their ability to make decisions, you know, or can they provide some level of care and protection for themselves? It's a medical term. It can be fluid. You could have somebody who is incapacitated today, but then they're not incapacitated tomorrow. You see this a lot in, in folks that will have phone calls for somebody who's had a stroke. And they improve, and they go from being incapacitated to where they now have that capacity to do these things. And there again, we look at a lot of time, is what is the decision itself, you know? One of the thing that we see a lot from doctors and hospitals is they'll put that folks are clear and oriented. But can't make decisions. Well, we have a hard time in court with that because there again. They're clear and oriented, but can't make decisions. So we're looking at, okay, what decisions can they make? Can they make a short, a short-term or a long-term decision, then do they understand the long-term consequences of those? Deal a lot of that when you're talking about dementia patients, or the, or it's somebody that has some kind of cognitive issues. And there again, there's decisions that are easy, there are decisions that are complex. We're looking at that. Does that person have that capacity? We're gonna look at their medical records to see if there's anything in there that suggests that this person cannot make these decisions. Because myself, I've been thrown out of houses many, 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 many times. There again, we also, there again, the domestic violence programs under adult advocacy. A lot of times, what will happen with that, there's often a confusion, and this happens a lot with law enforcement. The difference between domestic violence and being a vulnerable adult. A lot of times, we'll find that the, the victim of domestic violence is treated like a vulnerable adult. Because they're in a relation, a domestic violence relationship. So that becomes a problem, and we try to work with law enforcement on this. We have a domestic violence coordinator, Tammy Fullwood, who is awesome. At this, and really kind of breaks it down. But what we're saying, and what we really try to say to them is like, look at the, look, look at the person. If that person, just because that person stays in that relationship, does not make them a vulnerable adult. And you'd be surprised at how many law enforcement officers I've had say to me, well. Apparently there is because she keeps going back. But that's not the case. It does not make them a vulnerable adult. They still have to meet that criteria. And as I say to them. When we're taking, or when law enforcement is taking these folks into emergency protective custody. They're revictimizing these adults. Because there again, part of that domestic violence is the taking away of that person's independence. That, you know, they're, they're, they don't have any choices in their life. And basically, what we're doing is we're doing the same thing. Law enforcement's bringing them into our system, which can be very cumbersome. And it takes away that person's rights to decide what I want to do with myself. And then they're having to fight to get out of our system. Often, what we're seeing too, is especially when you're talking about older adults. Nowadays, you're seeing more and more older adults that are taking care of either grandchildren. That are in our system, or for whatever reason, they're now, you know, because of divorce or some other issue. So they have these children, excuse me, in the home, but they also might have a disabled son or daughter or child. So there's domestic violence going on. Now, this person is removed from the home. These children are now placed into our child welfare system, and you can kind of see where it goes. It just basically, it's, it's not good for everybody. There's other alternatives that we always want to look at, and we always try to work with law enforcement. Let's look at other alternatives than that. Because it comes, becomes very disruptive. Because you might have a, a person who is in a domestic violence situation. Has a child, disabled child, adult child living in the home, that's getting very, very good care. But now that person is pulled out of the home as well and put into a nursing home, and it, it takes. A long time once you get into the system to get out of the system, so.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Before you go to this next slide here, I'm just thinking, I'm sure people have a lot of questions.
Yes.
So, and y'all have very good information here, so much that we probably could be here for a long time, so.
We could, we could.
So I was just wondering, I see we have two questions in the chat already. And if we could probably get an answer to those two questions before we continue on?
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So Ms. Hess, you want to read those questions for us?
Well, they're actually not questions. It was actually from our coroner. She had logged on and she was having to log off, but she said she appreciated all the information. Because they do see a lot of elder abuse and neglect cases in the coroner's office. And then we had Judge Condon from Probate Court. Just letting everybody know to do their estate planning and adult guardianship, because I think Russell was talking about. Adult guardianship and conservatorship.
Okay, I did see he was on. Is he still on? Because I, I wanted him to make some comments. In reference to, you know, what is the legal part, since there's a lot that needs to be addressed as far as the legality of things.
He is on.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Johnson. Appreciate you doing this. Yeah, Irv Condon here. Yeah, we at the, the Probate Court, we hope we don't see our families. We hope that they will do the estate planning. For their property. We hope they have a will for managing their property during their lifetime. We hope they have a durable power of attorney for business affairs. And, and/or a trust. And then on the healthcare side, we hope that they have a healthcare power of attorney. And there are a number of other estate planning documents, such as the five wishes, the do not resuscitate orders. Ones that we cover in our monthly workshops, and you're all invited to that. But on the conservatorship and guardianship side, the role of the court is to give the person the greatest independence. And so we're looking at limited conservatorship, limited guardianship, and we deal in terms of capacity. I'm wearing contacts, so I can't drive without my contacts. We all have some limited capacity in some area. So we try to give the person the greatest independence. And our process is one where we have a family member generally come forward with an attorney. Where an alleged incapacitated person has not done their estate planning. And they're, either their person or their property need to be protected. And so then we have an action. By law, we have to appoint an attorney for the alleged incapacitated person. And then we also have a designated examiner that comes out, and also a guardian ad litem that's looking after their best interests. So the families can save money by doing their estate planning, rather than coming in and get a guardianship or conservatorship. But if not, we're there to help.
Okay, I, I did want to hear a little bit about the. Mental, the people who have to deal with, you know, mental capacity and all that. But let me find out who has a burning question that they need to have answered at this point, before we continue on with Mr. Rich. Nobody? Okay.
Johnson, I, I do have a question, but not a burning question.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Isaac Moore calling on the line. My, my question is, what, what kind of preventative action do we have or agency to? Judge, Judge Condon mentioned some things that was pressing in my mind, that we don't do enough. Ahead of time before we get old to protect ourselves. And, and, and he answered one of the questions I had, but what Angie and Russell. What type of alternative do we have to keep our people, or keep people from getting to the point where they are abused? Because a lot of people do not take care of themselves ahead of time.
Yeah, Mr. Moore, that, you, you, you're right. The problem we run into is, we're, we're always on that back end. So we always get it once it's happened. Now, you have like the Office on Aging. Which has a lot of resources for, for older adults and those kind of things, and folks that are vulnerable adults. They have a lot of resources out there. You know, they're, they're more than just the GAL program and stuff, they, and Don Budsmann's office. So that's a good resource. I know down around the Buford area, and, and I've heard they're trying to move, but I think it's, it's COSA. But it's a, it's a conglomerate, I guess, of a lot of different community partners. That come together, and when they have situations in the community. They look at, how can we do, how can we affect change on the front end of this? One of the things I've been kind of doing more and more. And I've been doing it with our counties, is I've been encouraging our counties to have MDT meetings, which are multi-disciplinary team meetings. And include a lot of those community partners within those meetings. We had one in Cursaw, which was run by our Probate Judge at the time, Judge Branham. In which it involved DSS, mental health, the Sheriff's Department, city police, the local hospital. DDSN and other various little agencies. And what we would do in that meeting is we would sit there, we would talk about cases that we might not have known about at DSS, but law enforcement had come across them. Or another agency may have come across that, and we would discuss those cases there again. We can't talk specifics, but we can talk scenarios. And then we would kind of say, okay, well, we, this can happen, and this can happen, and well, if this doesn't happen, then let's move to this. So we would formulate some kind of plans on the front end. And maybe then make those recommendations as far as, well, maybe, hey, look, we have water re-community action here, which will help folks with, with light bills and different kind of things. You know, we would get those folks, try to get those folks hooked up with those agencies. So there are, there is stuff out there. I find the biggest issue we have is just that lack of knowledge. That is the biggest issue that we see, is that lack of knowledge. That these caregivers or these family members or these friends have no idea where to go. They, they have no idea what's out there. So those are just, or, or Don Budsmann is one of those, I, I think that. They can really point you in a good direction, because there again, a lot of what they do is on the front end and preventative action. We're always the reactionary agency, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for coming up with something that can be prevented, because then that way it keeps folks, you know, from coming into our system.
And we have, it looks like Jamie Roper from the City of Charleston Mayor's Office on aging, and she gave us her phone number, so we'll send that out. Mr. Moore for everybody. And then Teresa Sogic just sent some helpful information. So I'll send all of this information out on our email. So if you're not on my email group, put your email address right here and I'll add you. And then we have two people that have their hands up. Moto G Play, sorry, it doesn't have a name, it's just got your phone name.
I guess that's me then, Suzanne.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to ask, you mentioned conservatorship in your, in your, in your talk, and. Wanted to know what qualifies a person for conservatorship? As well as what determines that a person need as a conservative? That wasn't mine, that's not my background.
Did you hear? I did, I did, I heard it. Well, for us, what we look at a lot of times is there again, whenever we have somebody that's coming into our, our system. We're gonna look at what's going on within their life. In other words, is, is, is the medical evidence, and we're gonna look at those medical records. Is there anything in there that suggests this person does not have the ability to handle their finances? Are their bills being paid? Are they able to pay their bills? Are they able to handle those things? And if they're in our custody, now, if they're not in our custody, there's not much we can do as far as getting, we can mention it. And if they're willing to do it, this is where like Judge Condon was talking about, having the family be proactive and work and get those things done. Because when they, when we talk to them, if they're not willing to do it. Then there's, we can't force them to do it. Now, if they're in our custody and they're going into a facility. A lot of times, we want to make sure that that facility is going to get paid. They may have a house, they may have cars, they may have assets that need to be protected, but also used for their care. So we have an attorney that we work with, Richard Connor out of Hartsfield. He does a lot of our conservatorships and guardianships, and we'll, he'll get a, something from the doctors. That looks at their capacity, you know, capacity to do those kind of things. And often, that's what we're gonna then present to the court to probate, is here's, you know, what the doctors are saying, and I, and I guess Judge Condon can kind of take it from there.
Yeah, what, for conservatorship and guardianship, as I indicated. We first look and see if they've done any planning. Do they have those tools that will avoid probate? Which are a healthcare power of attorney for guardianship, and a trust or power of attorney, business power of attorney for the conservatorship. But if not, we help the families get that conservatorship and guardianship appointed. Many times, it's just somebody in a nursing home that didn't do their estate planning. They're now incapacitated, so they can't execute those documents. So they bring an action, but it does cost, because you've got to pay the filing fee, you've got to have. An attorney appointed for the alleged incapacitated person. We have to appoint a designated examiner, and then we have a hearing. And in that hearing, as I indicated, we try to make it as least restrictive as we can. And we go through basic rights. It used to be seven basic rights, now it's up to about eighteen. And, you know, an example would be, can a person drive a car? You know, can they vote? Can they enter into contracts? But we're trying to give them the greatest independence and control of their life. And I would add, we do. And I would add, we do annual checks on the individuals. We have a, a visitors program with the Charleston School of Law, where we send out law students to check on our, our seniors, our wards under, under guardianship. And on the conservatorship side, they file an annual accounting attaching the bank statement. And then also giving us information on what assets they've invested in. And they also require a bond, which is an insurance policy to make sure that the assets are insured. Does that answer the question the lady had?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Then we have Nicole from the Sheriff's Office that has her hand up.
Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. What I wanted to further state is a number of resources that are available in the Charleston County area. So I am general counsel with the Charleston County Sheriff's Office. I come from a background with legal services, legal aid, and working with the probate court and elder abuse in the Charleston County area. So I would advise that if anybody is looking for resources, trying with 211 using their mobile app and saying that they're looking for assistance and then going to legal aid, whether to South Carolina Legal Services, Charleston Pro Bono Legal Services, or Charleston Legal Access. Any one of those organizations can offer no cost or low cost estate planning tools to get those things that Judge Condon is needing to make sure that the court is properly prepared to carry out those wishes in the least restrictive manner. So whether it is doing a will, whether it's a end of life directive or healthcare directive, power of attorney and making sure that the recordation is appropriate. Those are resources that are available at any of those agencies. Well, Charleston Pro Bono is for the Charleston area only. South Carolina Legal Services is statewide and there are also a number of clinics. If you have a person who's a veteran, they can go through Valor and have someone come to them to prepare those documents. And again, that is free, but the recordation does require a fee to the register of deeds. And as far as Charleston Legal Access, so if the individual does not meet the requirements under HUD to be considered low income, then they would be able to be eligible for a sliding scale and low cost services. Plus, if this is an elder who has an extraordinary need such as blindness or extreme health infirmity, they may be eligible for trust services as well that would help them with their social security, Medicare, Medicaid eligibility.
Okay, well, I know earlier, Dr. Mullin talked about this abuses on the rise. Excuse me. And, and so my concern is, is rising. We have COVID that's adding on to that. So who is responsible for reporting these abuse? When they are happening? Now, I know with sexual abuse for children, we have all kinds of different people in place, like the minister, the teachers, anybody that has anything to do with children. They can report. But I'm not hearing so much about what the adult having these abuse and whether being on the rise.
Oh, Ms. Johnson, I am glad you brought that up. I appreciate you because I can kind of speak to that. And I will say this. We are all mandated reporters. I mean, if you look at the, and I have a whole presentation on that as well, where we talk about that and, and I encourage everybody to, you know, the only folks I've ever heard that really aren't mandated reporters are the Ombudsman's Office. Because they are, they are advocate for the vulnerable adult. And I got that from the Ombudsman's Office when I talked to him one day because I did not realize that myself. But if you're in any kind of helping profession, we are mandated reporters. And the law is very, very, I mean, it's, it's cut and dry. And I tell people this all the time. Don't report because you know something's happening. I mean, that, that's easy. If you, you know what's happening, report it. But the law says that you're to report if you have suspicion of abuse neglect or exploitation. So I always encourage folks that, you know, don't sit there and say, okay, well, I don't know if this is happening or not. It may be happening, it may not. You know, my thing is this, you call us and make that report. And, and it's very simple to call. Our hubs are open 24 hours, seven days a week. And it's very simple number. I saw Angie gave it to you earlier, but I'll give it to you again. It's, it's 1-881-888. And I always get it mixed up, so I have to look at it. Care for us. Or if you needed the numbers, 888-227-3487. Call and make that report because I'm gonna be honest with you. I have seen many, many times, and I have talked with folks that said to me, Rusty, you know, I, I'm glad I made that report because y'all saved her life.
Rusty, can I add something to that too?
Yes.
Another big thing is a lot of times people will think, and this is across all types of abuse, and especially with elder abuse, will think that maybe it's not that big of a deal or it's not to the, to the, you know, severity of needing to be reported, but there could be five other individuals who have seen something similar and maybe seen other things. So if you report, they may not do anything right away because it may not be significant enough. But if five other people are reporting similar types of incidences, you don't know what other people have seen as well. So if you're suspecting it at all, err on the side of reporting and let it be up to them, Rusty's group, sorry. But to figure out whether it's reportable and figure out whether it's something or not. Like, that's not our job. Our job is to report it if we suspect it and then let the people that specialize in evaluating it evaluate it.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I mean, there again, if, if you suspect it, then, then make that phone call. You know, I, I can't stress that enough. I, I will never tell somebody not to call a report in. Because there again, also I'll say this too, that, you know, there again, you might make that report. We may get in the home and find that maybe that's not happening. But, you know, we assess for all typologies. So we may get in there and find that there's other thing, there's exploit, there's been many cases where we've gotten a report for self neglect or neglect and got in and found out there's exploitation going on, even abuse going on. So please, 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 please. If, if, if you take anything else away today, take this away. If you have a suspicion that a vulnerable adult is being abused or neglected or exploited, please call us.
Okay, we have a few other questions. I always like for people to get their answers if they're visiting with us. That's why they are here. So Ms. Hess, could you give us a few questions before we?
Most everything that's in the chat is just people sharing information and giving me email addresses to add them to our roundtable group. So there's no specific questions on here, but there may be questions that are people that are not chatting. So we'll open it up for anybody else that may have a question.
All right. While we're waiting for a question, then I want to say this, that what I've noticed is we have a lot of seniors that are having probably family members or caretakers that are misusing their checks that they receive. I've heard about, you know, that happening. And, and, and even with people who have property, sometimes their family members might get them to sign papers, you know, where they're signing away their property. So I just want to bring these issues out because it really concerns me. I don't know how much could be done ahead of time, but like Mr. Rich said, if we have suspicion of something small going on and we start reporting that kind of dilemma, you know, that we see abuse, then that may void off someone going way off into the, now they're writing checks, you know, out of somebody's account. I, I just, I don't think that this abuse is highlighted enough where, you know, we are conscious to say, do something, call, you know, because we're suspicious. But anybody else have a comment or question here?
Yeah, I would just add what we're seeing at the court, you know, 25 years ago, we'd have four or five will contests that would go to trial. And locally and even nationally, that's kind of gone away. The kids and other family members are not waiting until mom or dad are passing. They're trying to get the money now. So the battles are in these conservatorships. I highlight the need for a power of attorney, but it also can be a dangerous instrument if it's in the wrong hands. And the joint account with Rire Survivorship, all those things. We need to continue to protect our seniors and just realize that people are waiting now. This generation wants it hot now. They're not waiting until somebody passes.
And Ms. Johnson.
Okay.
Oh, I was just gonna say, if I can piggyback off that, we were working, we still are, we haven't been doing a lot since COVID's kind of happened, but we were working really close with the FBI. I was working with somebody out of Ori County as part of a, a group that they were combating elder exploitation and, and, and a, and a number that kind of surprised me, but didn't surprise me. But we are number two in the nation in elder exploitation. Yes, so that kind of tells you how prevalent it is. The issues that often that we run into when we get exploitation cases is there again, dealing with that competency capacity piece. And I know a lot of times we'll have conversations with law enforcement because we always, when we have an exploitation case, we're always referring that to law enforcement. The problem we kind of run into at times is, and I'll just tell you, I, I sat with a lady one time whose son was exploiting her. He was taking her money. It was really a sad situation. And I was talking to her and I asked her, I said, well, do you realize that you can't live like this if he's taking your money? And her response to me was this, he said, she said, Rusty, I know what my son is. I know he's a drug addict. But that's my baby and I'll give him every dime I got if he wants it. And that's oftentimes what we run into is that, that older adults just, they, they, for whatever reason, might be embarrassment or there again, just love of their child. They just don't want to, to pursue anything. So it becomes very difficult, but you're right. We have a huge problem in this state of that. And, and it's not just one area, it's all across the state.
Thank you. And Ms. Roper? Jamie?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to chime in. I'm Jamie Roper with the City of Charleston Mayor's Office on Aging. Back in 2016 through 2020, our office offered the training. We did an elder abuse and later life training was specifically geared toward training law enforcement and our judicial system on how to identify prosecute and tried to help alleviate elder abuse. That training was offered to 487 officers within the city of Charleston and several surrounding areas took part in taking that training. Several people on this roundtable were also a part of that. And we trained several judges. Judge Condon was also a part of that. And several of our majored judges and our solicitor's office. That training is an eight hour training. And if there are larger organizations that want to do that, our office would definitely be willing to support you in doing that and trying to set that up for you. Also on here, and I'll let them talk about themselves, MUSC also offers a shorter version of elder abuse training to help people identify some of those signs. And they do a great job with that as well. So my office is definitely a resource if there's questions. And when there's a lot of those financial exploitation issues, there are different, there are different agencies that some of those can be reported to as well. So if there's a need for a resource or if you know of a group or an organization that wanted some information or that wanted some training, please do feel free to reach out to my office. I will gladly, gladly do whatever I can to assist you with that.
Okay, so you don't mind stating your number? So when we put this video out, they can get it?
Yeah, my, my name again is Jamie Roper. It's the City of Charleston Mayor's Office on Aging. Our phone number here is 843-577-1306. Or you can reach me via email. It is roperj@charleston-sc.gov.
Okay, thank you so much. We have a question from Ms. Davis.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I was just, I was just knocking about, knocked about when I heard you say that we were the second in the nation for abuse. And let me, let me just divert here a minute. I just wanted to, this is great because it's all about educating the community, the public. So I was wondering, aside from these gatherings, is there any other outreach that each one of these agencies have in getting out to the community? Because I know you're dealing with all type of cultural differences. Like with probate, in the African American community, it used to be that, you know, somebody said, did you fill out your will? Their first response would be, why, do you think I'm gonna die? But knowing that that's the point and the reason why you should get one before you die. But it was like a stigma. And so I, I really wanted to know on that second in the nation for abuse, what in analyzing that information, gathering that information, what do you see as the, as the, what contributes to that factor to make us the second in the nation? Something is obviously lacking there. Something is not balanced there that we would have so much abuse available.
And when we're talking about that, we're talking about the exploitation piece. That's, that's what we're second in nation is. And we were actually first in 2018 to 2019, we were number one in the nation in. And, and these are statistics that we got from, from, actually from the Federal Bureau of Investigations. And they were tasked at the time with, hey, we gotta do something. We worked with the Attorney General's Office and the, let me see who else was all involved. There was just, there was banks that were involved. It, it was really a good program. A lot of what we did was education in the community. You know, teaching folks about that. A lot of what's driving it now is, I, I, I think you have a lot and, and you know, Judge Condon kind of really hit on it. You have a lot of these adult children now that we're seeing that are just fighting over mom or dad's estates. And I, you know, one of the things I'm seeing, we're seeing more and more of these, and, and I really, I'm gonna be honest with you, I hate them. But these POAs that they put these clauses in that this person can make these decisions. These are more or less durable power of attorneys. But they're putting in these clauses that say this person can, whether I'm incapacitated or not, make decisions for me or control my finances. And I, I'm gonna tell you, it is, it's horrible. It is absolutely horrible. But we have a lot of difficulty. And this is where we talked with law enforcement a lot about that because it's very hard to prosecute those. Now, we did have some successes over in Ori County. We've had some successes around the state. But I'm gonna be honest with you, they're very few and far between. Because there again, you'll either have the victim who's not willing to pursue anything. You don't have enough evidence to show that this person was doing this or doing that. So there's a lot of things that go, that go to it. The best thing I can say, and I think we need to do more of it, is like you were saying, be in the community. That's one of the things I've really started to do from my standpoint with our, with DSS, is be in the community. Talking to the community, talking to them about these issues. So one of the things, I put my email in the chat, I'm always willing to come talk. I'm a talker. I'm a people person. I'm always willing to come talk to community and, and, and talk to them about these issues.
Well, you are at the right place and we have lots of communities, I'm sure, that can use the information you're talking about.
Ms. Johnson, and I think one of the biggest thing, and this is, this is where the pushback comes in, is we lack some of the legislation we need to protect our elders. That's where people have to push back on their elected officials who are making the laws that govern and who limit the protection of our elders under the laws that we have.
Who's that?
One of the things, this, this is Jamie Roper. One of the things we need to also look at the fact of that this state offers, there's so limited services and it goes back to where we put our money at. Most of the times in order to do investigations, and I've worked some of these cases with the city's police department, you almost need a you almost need a forensic accountant to be able to maneuver through the financial records to be able to assess and find the exploitation. So, you know, I, I say to people, it goes back to that. And also, recently, our banking laws changed. One of the problem was for many years was that the banks would be held liable if they shared people's information, even if they thought it was a violation of exploitation. So, so luckily, we've made some progress there in the last few years that the laws have changed. But we need more laws to change. We need more legislation and pushback on some of those state folks that are, where they're sending our dollars to protect our elders and how we make these laws to protect the folks that we're all talking about on here.
And to kind of go off Ms. Roper right quick, you know, one of the things that the state does not have is a adult registry. We have a child abuse registry, but we don't have an adult registry. So, a lot of times, what you'll see is, I call them frequent flyers. They, they hop from one, we have, we've had one case on a lady who we finally caught up to her. But she would go from client to client. She worked for a home health agency. She would go from client to client to client to client to client. She would open up credit cards. She would do insurance policies. She would do, get on their bank accounts. And we could never quite catch up, but finally, they called up to her. This is in the upstate. So, and I, and I do believe they are pursuing, and I think they've got enough now to do the prosecution. But that's what we run into. There is no registry. So, you have these people just go, they do it here, and the only way you're ever gonna know is unless they're arrested. And then they have a background, you know, when they come across their criminal background. But other than that, you would never, ever know. One of the things we're saying at APS, we're not a, there, there has been a bill out there for the past couple of years about an adult registry at DSS. We're not opposed to it at all. The only thing we ask is that it is funded. Because it's there again, it will fundamentally change the way we do things as far as our investigation goes. And also, I'm just gonna give a little selfish thing right now. Please contact your, you know, folks, APS in this state gets zero state funding, zero. We get no state funding. So, that's always been the issue. Our only funding comes through the Social Services Block Grant, which is a federal grant that we share with child welfare. So, yeah, we're always hoping that we're gonna get, we were really hoping for the Build Back Better with the adult part of it. But, you know, unfortunately, we all know it's kind of stalled out. But there again, we're keeping our fingers crossed because those are funds that we can use to do things.
Okay. I see two more hands. We're gonna take those two, and then we'll have to end our session here. I know y'all, this, I'm enjoying it. We're getting a lot of information. Maybe we need to do this another time. But we are overextending our time. So, I think the Sheriff's Office and Levanya Graham Dixon. Well, let's take Ms. Dixon first, since we hadn't heard from her, and then we'll go to the Sheriff's Office.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Levanya Graham Dixon, and I work with the Trident Area Agency on Aging. I just wanted to mention, I am also a certified nursing assistant for twenty-five years. If that person is a certified nursing assistant, we do have a registry that can be checked by the public.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
But a lot of people don't tell you if there's a violation in everything for that person.
Okay. Now, we have a call.
I, I gotta hop off. Sorry. Trouble with my mute. I did want to respond back. Mr. Rich was talking about the durable power of attorney being effective after periods of incapacity. That is actually a design feature of that particular tool. What we want to make sure is if somebody is concerned about the potential for financial exploitation by a family member, that there are organizations that can provide on the front end, notification and resources, like Origin S. See what their financial planning skills that they have available. Or alternatively, when you're using an estate planning tool, if there's already dissension in the family, well, the testator or the principal has capacity to do so. The, the right tool for them might be a trust or some other mechanism to take the power out of the family member's hands and put it into a third party that's gonna have to file financial declarations on a periodic schedule. So, there are methods available, and these don't have to be high-cost private attorney methods. One of the folks had mentioned how there's like a stigma associated with estate planning. You think I'm going to die? Well, unfortunately, we all are gonna eventually pass on. But the important thing is to recognize that there are resources at libraries where you can have a less, less uncomfortable meeting. If you're meeting with a librarian who has an attorney present and is just giving an informational session at the Charleston County Main Branch or another library throughout the state, or if they're going to an outreach at a church or a community center. So, you don't have to go meet one-on-one with lawyers. I don't like meeting one-on-one with lawyers, and I am one. But it is a situation where we do need to educate the population about what resources are available. Try and de-stigmatize the succession planning that's available to them through advocacy and positive interactions. And if there is an organization that is trustworthy to an individual who's reticent to make their estate plan, maybe look and see if that particular organization has either a legal clinic coming to them or can partner with another organization and bring that resource to that community.
All right. Thank you so much. So, we have learned, it's more than me just having a personal observation or feeling that elder abuses has increased here in South Carolina. And I'm glad to know we have gone to number two from number one, Mr. Rich. But still, that's too high.
Yes.
And, and, and we see this as a problem that needs to be addressed. And I want to thank all of you for coming on and for sharing your information. And I look forward to us doing some other follow-up on this. Maybe if it's in the form of communities, inviting some of the presenters here, these resource managers to come out and, and share their information. That's a step. And if, if it was just you making a call to say, I think that something is going on here that's not too, so right. And, and maybe you need to look into it. So, here again, I want to thank all of the presenters, especially Dr. Morehead, Mr. Rich, and Judge Condon, and all of, well, you know, when you start naming people, what happens, right? You forget others. But all the agencies that shared your information here today, I appreciate you coming on and doing that. And until we see you next month.